Like, I know, met Judy years ago. Then you started, you've been there three months.
Yeah, he was my neighbor.
And, yeah, because I used to walk.
I'm going to come out executive session and the time is?
Is it eight o'clock?
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Roll call, Mr. Evans?
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
And Ms. McKee?
Yes. For the record, three trustees, myself, Mr. Evans, and Mr. Johnson, and also our legal counsel, Julie Donan, was in the executive session. Okay, I would like to turn the meeting over to, I'm sorry, resolution. The Board of Trustees at the Township, Licking County, Ohio, met in a regular meeting on November 21st, 2023, at 81 Liberty Street, Etna, Ohio, for the following members present, again, myself, as Roslyn McKee, Jeff Johnson, and also Trustee Evans. I, Roslyn, would like to move Resolution 2311210... Was that a 01, Julie?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. To the following, to make a recommendation for a... On August 31st, 2023, the Board of Trustees of Etna Township, Licking County, Ohio, received an employee complaint against a trustee submitted by the township administrator, attached here to as Attachment 1, and incorporated here on, hereon, by reference to the complaint. And upon receipt of the complaint, the Board authorized the Chair, myself, to do an independent third-party investigation, to conduct an investigation into a complaint, to determine the trustee engagement and conduct to the violations of the township's policy procedure or violations of the role for the Ohio law. I would like to make a motion to move that we would put a resolution in place to prevent Trustee Evans to contact Ms. Hanson, but she would work with Trustee Johnson to... If, if there's any, let's see, we would work with Trustee Johnson for any kind of... Yeah. We will for, we are putting Trustee Evans as a mediator, as a third-party mediator for Nita, sorry, Trustee, sorry, Trustee Johnson, for the mediator for Ms. Nita Hanson regarding the complaint.
So, Trustee McKee, ban?
Yes, please.
I believe the motion would be to, so you don't have to read the entire resolution.
Okay.
So I think at this point, since you've given kind of the background of the discussion, you can move to adopt Resolution number...
Okay. So, I move to adopt Resolution 23112101. Is there a second?
Second.
To add as presented?
As, as presented.
Okay. So, I was gonna put Johnson and as presented between...
Is that, is that where we were?
And then Mr. Evans, is that what it says here? So, the, the, it would be the resolution, the number as presented?
So, 23112101?
Yeah, I was trying to figure out what the resolution was doing, but, okay.
Well, I guess what I was trying to figure out too, as I read it, we've never done one of these before, and so they had an idea, so we're just trying to figure out a way.
Do you have a second on that?
I second it.
All right, so Roslyn and Evans second it.
Yes. Do we still go into discussion, or no? Do we still go into discussion? Okay, so is there a discussion?
I have a question. I just, our legal counsel said I should abstain from this. I had asked that if any action be taken, that I be given an opportunity to get a second opinion, obviously, that's not been given. I participated in the executive session. Is your advice that I can participate in a discussion, just not vote? Since I've already participated in discussion and executive session?
My advice would be if you're abstaining from the vote, then you abstain from the discussion on the motion.
In public, but I could participate in executive session. That doesn't make sense.
We just, we discussed in the executive session the nature of the discussion right there. There are additional items of absent and a part of the, the resolution.
So, basically, I can't say anything, you want to silence me and then do this? That doesn't seem right, and that's why I asked for this to be delayed if any action, so I could get a second opinion.
I'm only providing you with advice. My advice would be, because there's a potential for conflict with them, my advice would be that you abstain from discussion and abstain from voting. Whether or not you take that advice is, is your own prerogative, Miss Trustee, obviously.
This doesn't make sense, you can participate in discussion there, but not in public.
And walk through that in the executive session.
Roll call, Mr. Evans?
Mr. Evans?
I would like the legal counsel, but I guess I'll abstain.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
And Ms. McKee?
Yes. Now, I just want to be clear, so, because I hear a lot of moaning and groaning out there.
No, no, you don't.
No, 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 I want to be clear on this whole thing.
You don't hear anything.
No, no, well, why didn't you say anything?
I didn't, I just went...
No, you're fine, but let me just be clear.
No, I don't really want to share your opinion.
Well, you know what? There's a door right there, if you don't want to hear it, okay? I am, I am running a meeting, okay? I live here, just like you do, okay? I know you, you don't like me, but you don't know me, but I'm going to...
Yes, I do, I do know very well.
No, you don't know me, you think you know me, you don't know me.
Yes, I do.
Okay, no, you don't.
Stop.
No, you know, you know, you know, no, you don't.
You don't.
So, let me just make it clear, let me make it clear here tonight, please, okay? Out of respect, we had to do what we had to do as a board to protect this township, okay? We can be sued, and that's why we chose to do what we did here, okay? Either you want to be sued, or you protect your township. I care about my township, I live in this township, okay? I've lived here for 20 years. I love Etna Township. I want to protect the township, and I also want to check, protect the employee at the same time. If this was me, I would want the protection as well. So, I respect what we're doing here. So, that's why we did what we did. Thank you.
And on the record, Ms. McKee stopped the investigator from talking to me, stopped the investigation before it concluded, one-sided.
Mrs. Donan, can you speak to that, please?
I prefer not to, I don't have anything in particular to say in terms of...
So, I would just be clear, we did not, I did not stop the investigation. He's always a victim, he always lies to people on social media, and you guys believe him, okay? So...
I'm not on social media.
Oh, that's good to hear.
I hear you aren't.
No, ma'am, I, I wish you'd respect me, I'm serious, stop it. I mean that, stop it. I just want to say, and I know you, you know, you guys come here just to stir up stuff, stop it, come for reasons to bring something positive to the township, not negativity, okay? It's, it's not good to do this.
I don't need reprimand.
Okay, well, then stop doing what you're doing then.
Well, you too.
No, I, wait a minute, ma'am, I am the Chair of this board, I have the right to conduct the meeting here.
Carry it on.
Okay, please stop it.
Then quit finger pointing.
No, I'm not finger pointing, I talk with my hands, I've always have, okay? That's what I do.
Stop talking with your hands.
No, I'm not going to do that.
Well, then I don't have to either.
Okay, we'll move on.
Thank you.
Thank you, we'll move on, but I want to say this, to be clear, as a board, I did not stop the investigation.
I don't believe you.
We, okay, that's fine, I need to, ma'am, please stop. The investigator, the attorney that was hired by our law firm that represents the township, contacted Mr. Evans over 15 times to reach out to get his opinion on the investigation. He refused. He told her that he would meet with her after January. So, this is why the investigation stopped, so that's the truth right there.
I'm sorry, can, can I have an opportunity to tell the truth? The investigator said her schedule was in a trial until mid-December and mentioned January, and Ms. McKee told our attorney to end it, end of this month. So, they concluded without even talking to me, and I didn't even get a response from the attorney after the reply to her, more, almost two weeks ago. So, Ms. McKee did end this, one-sided investigation.
Let's move on to, turn the meeting over to our administrator, Ms. Nita Hanson. Thank you, Julie, have a wonderful evening.
Happy day.
Thank you, same you.
May God...
Yes, ma'am, please.
I have a check to make sure the mic's still on.
I turned it.
Oh, okay.
Oh, yeah, I cut all of it.
It's not, you just have to turn it on or off, I'll do it. Is it on?
Is it on?
Yes.
Yes, okay, good. Okay, I wanted to start with a discussion about State Issue 2, Voters Approve State Issue 2 Authorizing and Regulating the Possession, Use, and Sale of Recreational Marijuana and Cannabis Products Effective December 7th of 2023. The new sections of the Ohio Revised Code related to this topic authorize the Board of Trustees to adopt a resolution to prohibit and limit the number of adult-use cannabis operations within the township. I mention this now only as a suggestion for future consideration of adopting a resolution should this board determine that limiting or prohibiting adult-use cannabis operations would be wise. I circulated an invite that came from Shelley Marie, oh, there you go, from Shelley Marie, for a Fairfoot County Economic Update on Thursday, December 7th. If any of you would like to attend, I'd be happy to send your RSVP. I've already RSVP'd for myself, but if anyone else wants to go, I'm happy to send in your RSVP. The Ohio Township Association Winter Conference is scheduled for February 7th through 9th. The cost of registration is $125 per person. I recommend that each of us attend, as well as Mr. Burkeholder and Ms. Batunia. Based on some of the available workshops, there is value in having Mr. Singleton and Mr. Copley attend as well. I'm asking you to approve registration for all nine of us. There are also some optional events, there's a quote-unquote "movie" reception, there's a legislative reception, which I'd like to attend, there's a casino night, and a luncheon with keynote speaker Marty Brenman. There will also be charges for parking each of the three days. So, if each of us attend the conference, as well as all optional events, and pay individually for parking for the three days, which would be about $100, the total cost for all nine would be $2,835. I'm asking that you authorize up to nine attendees to the OTA 2024 Winter Conference, including parking, for a cost of up to $315 per person, not to exceed a total of $2,835.
I also to approve that amount that would not exceed the, what is it, 20?
$315 per person, and not, not, the total amount not to exceed $2,835.
Roslyn, if you just do so, move that, move that motion, and I can...
So, I'm making a deal, okay? I'll swing to, to make a motion.
I'll second. Regarding discussion, I'll, I'll register myself, I'm not sure what it means.
Okay, very good.
And I think, I'm not sure if Mr. Burkeholder already registered or not, so he could be reimbursed if he did.
Yeah, I think all of us, I, I haven't registered myself yet, so I don't know if it's, you can register and then submit payment, or if you have to submit payment and then will be reimbursed, I just don't know, I don't know the answer to that.
Maybe not at the time of registration.
Payment at the time of registration, okay.
So, then we should be reimbursed?
Yes. Anyway, good.
I should sign with myself, if you have any...
Call.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes.
The OTA has a new program for 2024, it is a Township Webinar Subscription. All active and affiliate members of the Township will have unlimited access to all OTA webinars for a one-time fee of $250. In the seven months that I have been with the Township, I've attended a number of OTA seminars for toll, in the total fees event over $100, just for me individually. Given that all of our active and affiliate members would use the unlimited subscription, it would seem to be of great value if you are applying to approve the purchase of the OTA webinar subscription of $250.
I'll move.
I'll second. Session.
Are we gonna, can we open this up to the fiscal officer elect to, or do they, I, I, there's restrictions on who you can share this with, it, you know?
Yes, so we've already been working on having her accepted as a Township affiliate, a Township member, so I would expect...
We just don't want to violate their...
Yes, no, and she wouldn't, it could, and there wouldn't be any way to violate, because either she can get into the website, or she can't, and so that's a permission.
Right, we talked to another trustee, this is all we had, so we were able to set that out. Thank you.
I think we need a vote, yep?
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Copley and his crew spent about a part of the last two weeks involved with paving projects on Palmer Road and Etna Parkway and Heritage Drive. They spent many hours on the roads, rather than free, thank you for all that you do. Mr. Evans asked that Mr. Copley measure the site distance at the intersection of Palmer and Tollgate. Mr. Copley's measurements were that the bushes and trees at the intersection interfered with the appropriate site distance. The homeowner trimmed the offending bushes and removed one tree, but disputes the measurement as to the other trees identified. I asked the County Engineers Office to confirm Mr. Copley's measurements. While the engineer is confident that the measurements are correct, he requires a request for engineering assistance to determine whether the trees violate the site distance requirements creating a safety concern. I'm asking that you authorize submission of a request for engineering assistance, which will need a minimum of two trustees' signatures.
No, there's three.
Yeah, there's no charge.
I'll, I'll move. And I, I do have a question, because we dealt, we dealt with this at New England Makers at, at the previous board, where they were gonna cut down all the trees, but it, it allowed for the site distance, if you remove the branches to 10-foot, the trees can remain. Is it because of how they're situated and proximity, that they're blocking, that that's not adequate, or?
Yeah, so the trunks let the trees themselves.
Yeah, the actual tree, the trees, the limbs are just getting, they're growing and getting bigger, that it's obstructing the view.
Right, well, that's what, I, I got that complaint from a residence, saying it's dangerous, so that's why.
It, it is.
It is.
And then as far as the bushes, they would just have to maintain a lower height.
They, they would keep, they're keeping up with the bushes, but the trees are just too big, or...
And I, I can understand why they have the bushes there, because the cars turn and keep the lights on the house.
The, the party owner is an engineer, and he just disputes, he's done his own measurement, and so we're sort of at an impasse, so we can't move forward unless we have, you know, the support of the engineer.
Yep, I agree with you.
Voco, Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes.
And I have that ready, if you can sign it after the meeting. We had a resignation from our road crew, and I'm asking your approval to advertise the opening on, on the road crew using Indeed. There's no charge to post a position. Before not evil hire a great candidate soon, we may need to consider contracting some of the snow removal, but hopefully, we're gonna get great candidates, and we'll get the position filled quickly. For now, I'm only asking for authority to advertise the open road crew position on Indeed.
I'll make a motion that we, our motion that we advertise on Indeed, as you described, for a road crew position.
Thank you.
I did one question and discussion. We've had several individuals that have applied in the past that didn't accept, or didn't, has any thought been to contact them and let them know that there's a position open, or see if they'd be willing to?
So, I'm working with Mr. Copley, I know there's one candidate who has expressed interest in returning to the township. We have concerns about, you know, how we're considering someone who has left us before, but I haven't reached out, and, and, I mean, that's a good thought, we, well, and I can talk to others who had expressed interest, I don't know, that we know that any of them are still available.
Well, the one that, I thought there was one that you called, and that's the one you called, reached out to, Mr. Evans, that you had a conversation with, that we...
Right, that, that had a concern about pay and all that before we adopted their union, and he wasn't told about all that stuff, and then he declined, yes, I know that.
Is he still available? So, we'll just...
Yeah, we could, we'll work on that, yeah, we'll work on that, we just need to have sort of a broader scope of advertising, but we can certainly make individual contacts.
Voco, you can... Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes.
Thank you. On November 17th, I conducted performance evaluations and meetings individually with Laura Brown and John Singleton. I provided each of you the narrative that I prepared for those evaluations. Laura Brown has been employed by the Township since May 24th, 2004, 19 years.
Wow.
It's amazing. Her last evaluation was done by Jeff Johnson on June 7th, 2022, and at that time, she received a pay increase. Laura's current pay is $23 per hour, and it is substantially lower than comparable salaries reported in the MORC 2023 Salary and Fringe Benefits Survey. I recommend a 1.3% cost of living increase, together with a merit increase of 7.5%, which recognizes her many years of service and the many roles that she plays here at the Township, for a new rate of pay of $25.02 per hour, beginning with the next pay period.
I would like to make an option for the pay increase for Laura Brown, our secretary, effective on next pay.
Second.
Second.
Next pay, let's, let's make that a clear date, please.
Okay.
So, the new pay period started...
It ends on, it ends this week, right?
So, yeah, it ends on 25th, so do you want to start it on November 26th?
That would be, yeah.
Yes.
And then, as far as discussion, I've asked for an executive session to discuss this, which I believe all employee reviews, evaluations, and should do. It's not appropriate to try to either silence a trustee or force the discussion in public. I have numerous questions about, it, it appears that the, the evaluation report was done in July by maybe the employee themselves, and that it was just handled now, but I, I do have serious concerns about this. So, I, I would move to table this until we have the proper executive session to discuss this appropriately. It says 1117.3 on here.
I think Laura prepared her part in July, at that time, you know, it's newer to the Township, and getting involved in what was going on, and so that was just a delay on my part to, to conduct my part of it, which was just done.
Well, there was a motion for, I think it's appropriate that we have an executive session, so we can discuss this stuff.
Any second on this motion?
Your second on Mark's motion?
Because again, what you're trying to do is silence me or force me to discuss the private, what should be private in public, and that's not right.
We're dying for Blackest touch of this second, so roll call, Ms. Mary?
Mr. Evans?
No.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes.
John Singleton has been employed with the Township since March 20th of 2017, nearly seven years. His last evaluation was done by Mark Evans on March 31st, 2022. At that time, he received a pay increase of 7.15%. John's current salary of $53,575 is below comparable salaries reported in the MORC 2023 Salary and Fringe Benefits Survey. I recommend a 1.3 cost of living increase, together with a merit increase of 7%, which also recognizes his nearly seven years of service and the various roles that he plays in the Township, for a new rate of pay of $58,025, beginning with the next pay period on November 26th.
I'll make a motion for the pay increase for Mr. Johnson, effective November 26th. A second.
Second.
Discussion?
Again, we should have an executive session, but this review, I've never seen one that is all tens in one night, that, it's just not, not proper, and the goal for improvement is to survive the next two years. The, these reviews are just...
Those weren't my comments.
These reviews are just riddled with, I think, inappropriate evaluations, and, again, this should have been discussed in there, I, I've attempted to have numerous executive sessions to discuss issues with employee performances and stuff like that, it's been refused by the Board President, Vice President. So, again, I won't say any more, but this is not appropriate.
So, what you reference are the employees' own evaluation, my evaluation is contained in my narrative report. It recognizes the depth and breadth of experience and ability that Mr. Singleton has. It also recognized and commented on some issues for improvement on his, on, on his performance. Specifically, one of the goals that we have implemented is for John to have a half-day each week, at least a half-day each week devoted to being out in the Township, to actively pursue and, and look for potential violations. I have appreciated how he approaches violations, when he needs to be tough, he's tough, and when the situation calls for compassion, he's compassionate, and I've appreciated that about him. But my narrative conveys all of those, those things, both positive and negative, that we've discussed, and improvements that we've talked about, so I think that my narrative is a fair evaluation.
Roll call, Ms. Mary? Mr. Evans?
No.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes.
I attended the school, District Board meeting on November 16th. Among other things, the Board approved the purchase of 9.77 acres across Watkins Road from Petascola South Park Elementary for $650,000. They have 45 days to complete the required soil and wetlands studies, although there wasn't any discussion about their intended use for the property, and we're kind of wondering if it's gonna be the new bus garage, just because it gives them twice the space that they have now, and it makes sense to have it over there, but that all remains to be seen. space that they have now and it makes sense to have it over there, but that all remains to be seen. One of our sheriff cruisers needs repair for an oil leak, exhaust leak and break. The estimate for repair is five thousand nine hundred fifteen dollars and two cents. These are repairs that were recommended by Lieutenant Carson when I called him and said, we have this estimate. Is it, is it your recommendation that the cruiser be repaired or is it time to consider taking it out of service? And he said, no, it's a newer vehicle and, and he recommended repair. Jeff asked me to get an estimate for engine replacement, so I've also provided you that estimate of fourteen thousand one hundred seventy-eight dollars and thirty-five cents. I'm asking you to authorize the repair estimate of five thousand nine hundred fifteen dollars and two cents.
I'll move.
Will call in second?
How many miles are on the cruiser? It doesn't state in the
Hmm, I don't think I know the answer to that. If it's not on the, it's not on the estimate, I don't know that.
This is on tip for the five thousand, right?
I'm sorry.
This is on tip for the five thousand, right?
That's why I'm asking Laura. Yeah, yeah.
I'm quiet about the engine thinking that while they had the engine out, they just swapped the engine, but that was certainly more expensive.
I would just ask in the future that the mileage be included on these estimates so we can gauge the age, the use of the vehicles and stuff like that.
Sure. If I had known that ahead of time, I could have got it, but I just it, Lieutenant Carson was highly recommending the repair and it wasn't something on my focus for that estimate, but
That is on the four, right?
I'm sorry? Yeah, it's not, yeah, yeah, yeah. It's not one of the, yeah, yeah.
Do we want to find out the mileage on it? Because I mean, if it's gas and you're pushing two, maybe an engine, I mean, it's a lot cheaper than a brand new one, but without knowing the mileage. I mean, if it's fifty thousand, I'm saying you're not going to replace.
He was a mileage on the email. I don't think so, because I think the email literally just forwarded the estimates.
Because although the additional cost is eighty-two hundred, it really extends the life of it where a new vehicle is, what are we paying, like fifty, sixty thousand?
Well, and the one thing that is, is that if you look at the estimate, it kind of included, takes on the, the thing over there on, that's part of that, and every little change. That's thirty-one forty-four.
Well, you got the main seal, but there's not the engine. That's the axle.
The only thing I could say is that, you know, our cruiser is sitting there at Maverick Motors and it's not gonna, there's not going to be any care to it until it's approved.
That's why I didn't know exactly. They didn't say that if you give this number here on the So when it has the seal on, that are parts of it, but and that's not much money to do that, that one. Taking motor out.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes.
Thank you. The car, the car committee had a site visit at the property. We had great weather to walk all around and see the various parts of what is going to be our great parcel. The surveys have been distributed via our list serve. We went to the HOEs. It's on our website. We've received to date a hundred and seventy-four electronic responses and one paper response. For any paper responses, we're putting them into the survey monkey so that the response will be included in the compilation. In addition, when waste, we'll be mailing a paper copy to our residents who receive paper communications from them. So please encourage everyone you know to complete the survey in one form or another. And, and I wanted to give Mr. Evans an apology because I know at our last meeting, you specifically asked about making the PDF fillable. I didn't make that note and I simply forgot. And so I apologize that I didn't have that detail taken care of.
I didn't and I've distributed that one.
Great. As far as I know, nobody has used that form to make a reply, but it'll be easier if they choose to, for sure. The JED and JEDZE boards met last Friday. The reported financial distributions for the third quarter of two thousand twenty-three to the township from JEDZE one, which is the prologis, is generally prologis, was ninety-three thousand nine hundred seven dollars and eighty-one cents. The distribution to the township from JEDZE two, which is Amazon, was two hundred thousand nine, two hundred thou, two hundred, two hundred thousand, sorry, nine hundred seventy dollars and twenty-four cents. The distribution from JED one, which is Uline, was thirty-four thousand one forty-five oh nine. And that JED is expected to have substantial increases next year as Uline comes online as an active employer. JED two, which is Core Five South Eight, was five thousand eighty, eight hundred forty-one dollars and thirty cents. The Cubes West, which is Coles, was two thousand four hundred eighteen dollars and eighty-five cents. The Cubes East, which is Ryder and Loves and those properties, eight thousand nine hundred four dollars and eight cents. JED seven, which is the Skanel property, forty-six thousand two eighty-eight oh five. Together, all of the, the JEDZEs and the JEDs, the third quarter total distribution to the township was three hundred ninety-two thousand four hundred seventy-five dollars and forty-two cents. Likewise, the distributions to the schools were similar from JEDZE one. The Southwest Licking School District received in the third quarter of this year ninety-three thousand nine hundred seven dollars and eighty-one cents. From JEDZE two, the net after debt reduction was one seventy-six, one hundred seventy-six thousand one ninety-seven twenty-two. From JED one was twenty-five thousand seven twenty-nine forty-three. From JED two, five thousand four hundred seventy-nine dollars and sixty-one cents. From JED three, one thousand eight hundred forty-two dollars and ninety-four cents. And from JED four, two thousand seven hundred eighty-five dollars and seventy-eight cents. For a total distribution to Southwest Licking Schools for the third quarter of three hundred five thousand nine forty-two seventy-nine. I, you're welcome. I was told a year past, the township offices and garage have been closed on Thanksgiving Friday. The employees take paid time off or vacation or mail pay if none is available. Bubba has confirmed that there's no union concerns with continuing this practice. And should you choose to close the operations on Thanksgiving Friday, we would send notice of the closure to the list serve and post it on the website. As with any time that the township is closed, Mr. Copley will be available to handle any emergencies. And I'm also scheduled to be in town and would be available to assist with emergency needs. So I would ask you to consider closing township operations for Thanksgiving Friday.
I'll make a motion. Matter of fact. All second.
Question?
Yeah, we'll get time sheets tomorrow.
Yeah.
Will call.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes. Before you move away, Ms. Hanson, I just wanted to thank you for going over the JEDs and the JEDZEs, the, the, the funds that are available, they're in those accounts. I don't think in the previous board that they really gave that information. So I want to let you know that I appreciate you doing that.
Thank you.
It's really matters. So we, we know what's going on.
Thank you.
But I'd like to say it would be helpful to have that in printed form. That's a lot of numbers, a lot of figures.
Oh, sure. I'd be happy to send it to you.
I have requests.
So I just want to say in closing, first of all, if you need anything, reach out to me. I'm here for you. But I wish you and everyone you love an amazing Thanksgiving celebration. And if there's anyone who doesn't have any place to go, you're welcome in Hanson House. So we, we never want anyone to be by themselves. So please, please let me know if you, if you need a Thanksgiving dinner, which you're lucky to have. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. There's sixty of us.
There's sixty. Okay, well, it's been a little time, but we'll make it happen. Paige is trying to figure out how much brush she has to take.
Catherine? Jack, you guys got sixty? Who's got seventy-five?
I think I'm sixty.
Good. Okay, we'll move over into new business. Resolution twenty-three eleven twenty-one zero-two. I move resolution accepting amount and the rates as determined by the budget commissioned and authorizing the necessary tax levy and certifying them to the county auditors as presented. Is there a second?
I'll second.
And discussion?
Is this a road to Bruce Lovey that we're contacting on possibly suspending or we wanted to?
It's a road to Bruce Lovey. It's a real suitcase. It's regular. Great.
Feel like you need to do this suspension. You must have been interested earlier in the year.
I just don't think it should.
Will call.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes. Hey, I will turn the new road bus, school bus stop over to Mr. Evans.
Okay, a little confused because this Hanson took this over and didn't include me. However, from what I've seen, the recommendation, I think we should have an engineering assistance request to install a T turnaround after discussion with, I think his name is Ryan Brown, with the school transportation department, the director. I did see Ms. Hanson did a site visit and suggesting possibly moving a South Central utility pole and allowing a turnaround in there. I've looked, I think that's going to be problematic. The same as, as before, getting stuck. I think we should make it easier for the school bus drivers, especially since they're having such a hard time getting drivers. We don't want them nervous, you know, possibly getting in the ditch and that. Putting that T at the end, I think would be the most economic, most viable solution for ongoing matters. And I know the residents here that kind of initiated this, Mr. Rager. So I'd kind of like to hear from him if you have a, after what you have to say.
Well, that would not be my decision, but I'm happy to tell you. I mean, once I understood what you brought, the issue to my attention, I just started doing an investigation to find out what possibly can be done. I, when I did the site visit, Mr. Brown was there on behalf of the, the school district. And he had what he described as his best bus driver out there on the Friday before. I determined, well, first, let me back up because I first spoke to Mr. Brown on the phone, who told me on the phone and reiterated to me in our meeting that he does not believe that it would be fiscally responsible for the township to pay the amount of money that it would take to make any change to the road. It was very important to him for me to convey his concerns about that. But I, we were talking and I said, well, I can see that the homeowner has made improvements to his driveway. And he said, you know, well, there's this pole. And so we went out, we were taking a look at it. We determined, I found out, I thought it was an AEP pole. I found out that it was a South Central power pole. Got in touch with the proper person at South, at South Central Power. He met us out there with Mr. Brown at the site and they are willing to move the pole, move it down far enough that Mr. Brown said, if you move it down equal to this tree, my bus can turn around.
At no cost.
And that would be, so he said because of the age of the pole and the safety issue that sort of creates in the possibility that it would just, and maybe at some point get knocked out anyway, they're willing to move it at no cost to the township. So Bubba might have to like build up the berm a little bit with some,
Some berm material.
Some berm material, babe. I thought it might have some technical name. But Bubba might have to build up the berm a little bit, but it looks like that it would be an option that would solve the problem. I guess we won't really know until they start running the bus out there to pick up the children. And so that's why I said in my email, I'm not suggesting that we not go forward with obtaining the engineer's estimate because those things typically take some time to happen. And then, you know, once you get the engineer's estimate, then as a board, you can determine. Does it, does it make, is it fiscally responsible to pay however much it's going to take to make changes to the road, purchase right away, do whatever needs to be done. But in the meantime, a shorter term and a faster solution is going to be for South Central to move the pole and start bringing the bus in.
Okay, my concern is
Let me tell you just one other thing. I apologize. The other point that Mr. Brown wanted to make, that he made me both over the phone and in person, is that the distance that the children walk is a shorter distance than many of the children in the district have to walk. And it's within the allowable distance to this, by the school.
Right, but if you look at the safe routes to school initiatives and the recommendations, you got to take into account, is it lit? Is there sidewalks in? And there is none. It's a rural road. I think the concern is the safety here and I'm not sure if Mr. Brown actually, actually knew what the cost would be. But that's where I think we need to get this. My concern is, you said their best bus driver did it and it was okay. Not taking anything away from any other bus driver, but you're going to have new bus drivers. You're going to have, you know, fill-in bus drivers that aren't familiar with that. So I don't think we should try to do the bare minimum and just get it through. I think that we, we should move forward with this engineering request. See, see what the options are. I already talked to the engineer. He said the option for the five foot that Mr. Brown originally suggested is not an option of adding it to the width. The T is the most economical. Other areas in the township have, have had that done. Lynn's Road has a little bus turnaround too. But as, as far as being within that distance, I, I just don't think that we should kind of quibble if it's going to help keep the kids safe, especially with it getting darker sooner winter. Sharing that road with cars. And we don't know in the future how many, how many kids are going to be on that road to be served, so.
So I, I would only say that I've never driven a bus, so I have no idea. But since it was the, the director of that part of the schools that was telling me that he believed that if this was done, that that might take care of the issue, that he, it's certainly a solution that he would like to try. Because he, again, he just doesn't recommend that the township spend the money that it's going to take to improve the roadway.
Did you say how much it would be?
No, I don't think he has any idea. I think he just assumes that because the, the improvement to the road is going to be a large amount of money.
I think we should determine what that cost is.
Totally agree.
Again, the safety of the kids and that. And I did speak to a school member that said she believed the policy was that the buses should not be backing up like that. So she did have a concern there. So, and I don't know, I'd like to have the residents say a few words.
Come on, sir.
That'd be great.
Can I start off by saying I tried to avoid getting the township involved in the
That's why we're here.
I'm actually a bus mechanic for Gorda, so I mean, I, I know about buses myself. The guy from Ryan, Eric Rigger.
Okay.
Brian Brown, who I've been speaking with, before I brought this to the township. You know, the drive, the driveway was improved by me or whatever. I had it fixed. He came down, backed the bus in, told me it wasn't going to be feasible. Previously, they had used my neighbor's driveway, which is if the plans are to do a
T?
Well, the T would be up there, but something prior to the T or whatever.
There, there was a five-foot wide area in the road on the east side, but that's not a viable option.
I got you. I got you, um. Anyways, the, what, move, prior, prior to all this, Ryan Brown came back to me and told me I needed a forty-foot wide driveway in order to back a bus. So, that's sort of why I'm bringing it here, because it seemed like we were butting heads and nothing was getting anywhere. Um, I know I've reached out to Bubba quite a few times and talked to him. We tried coming up with a solution and maybe just adding some gravel at the end of the road for a temporary solution or a permanent. Um, I brought that up to Ryan, people are unhappy about it, didn't want to move forward with it. I mean, I would like to go forward with what Mark passed for requesting for the engineering to look at it, um. Just for the simple fact is like, I, I got video footage and stuff, people like to see it, but it is dark. I leave for work at four-thirty in the morning, my fiance leaves at like six. There is a, a middle school boy down the road from us that does ride the bus and has to walk down the road also. Um, it's not just my kids, but I would like to see this get put into motion.
How's the, how's the bus turning? How does the bus turn around now?
So, previously throughout the years that I've lived there, I've watched the bus come down, and they would turn around prior, before my house, they would pick up at, uh, like a cattle barn down the road and back up into a neighbor's driveway there. Prior to that, they came past my house and went back up in the last house on the road, in their sis driveway. And then when my kids started riding, that's where they started picking them up at, was my house. Well, they pick up in front of my house and they go to the neighbor's driveway and back in. And everything was fine until that winter, and the bus got stuck, and then they, they claimed they weren't coming down the road.
Then it gets stuck multiple times?
Twice, from what I heard, but years prior to this, from talking to the neighbor, they've never had an issue in the past, they've always came down the road, and now also it's a issue. I appreciate that.
Oh, yeah, thank you.
And I just think the T would be good, I mean, you've got delivery trucks, you've got, it, it just makes it a little safer on our roads if we could get them, especially all with the T. Unless you want that pole moved for another reason, we can move it and then-
I think a lot of the poles are about to be moved, the Spectrum's going down the road, and they're working with South Central trying to replace poles to either near you.
Yeah, I don't see them as being mutually exclusive by each other.
They're not.
They, I mean, we can move, we can ask South Central Power to go ahead and move the pole, and Bubba can put some berm, berm material, and, and if, we can use that and then figure out when we get the engineer's estimate, what we go do from there. I don't see that they are opposite options.
Might as well ask another question, if we did have berm, would, would it only be for, for them pulling out of my driveway?
Um, I can, I can put it there, but Ryan requested sixty-foot of berm, he wanted sixty-foot of pipe too, but, I mean, we're-
That's what I wondered, because I have my pond to run off of, just on the other side of the road, so I imagine that we're just want the berm
Just in front of the-
or after they pull out.
Where the pole is, we want them to do it there, but if, you know, for in front of the driveway, we just shut it and touch it up.
I mean, I'm not worried about my driveway, I just don't worry about the drainage for the water.
So, I, I'll move to, um, so you would be fine with moving the pole and doing the berm while we're doing this, doing both?
Yeah, I'd be fine with that.
Okay, I, I'll move to approve the township request for engineering assistance, and also, uh, approve the coordination, uh, by our administrator in moving that pole and, and building that berm.
Caliphate, second, discussion.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes. All right, we'll move over to the Tuscaloosa Valley Memorial. It's just up for discussion right now, um, as we, um, said earlier, we did a, uh, silence for the, uh, horrible accident that took place here in Etna off the highway. Um, there was an email that was sent to me from the Tuscaloosa Valley, um, School District, asking for us to work with them on getting something together, um, some kind of memorial. They didn't really say exactly what, but I sent an email, which I shared with the other trustees, that we could discuss to see what we wanted to do, but kind of let them lead the way of what they would like to see happen. Um, so that's up for discussion right now.
I had a thought about one thing maybe we could think about is, as we are developing our park property, maybe we could have like a, a picnic shelter, but would be, um, dedicated to the victims and, you know, survivors and families.
Yeah.
I mean, if we're gonna have the picnic shelter anyway, just put maybe a nice platform or something.
Or if the park has an outside amphitheater, I don't know what we're gonna be doing in the park, but I think that might be fitting because of music and that.
Well, that's a better idea.
Yeah.
If, if the park has, I mean, some parks do, you know, for like local performances, they'll do, so I'd say if we did that, that would make sense with doing it.
And now there's somebody putting crosses on the side of the tree, like.
Yeah.
Ducked somebody.
So, they, um, I, we got an email, like I said, I hope you read your email, Mr. Johnson and Mark, and that she sent, sent from up there wanting us to work with them, to try to put something together, and I can turn it over to the administrator, Ms. Hanson, to work with them to try to figure out what they want us to do, if anything, um, in the future. Because I know right now they're pretty busy, I haven't had a call back ever since I saw, sent the email.
Yeah, I did that, that's for sure.
And maybe we could even work in conjunction with the school, Watkins.
Yeah. I have great contacts at the school board, so I can talk to them about that as well.
So, we'll just stick a pin in it for now, or kind of?
Yeah, stick a pin in it and I'll-
Okay.
I'll work on it.
Okay. All right, so we'll move on over to the, um, twenty-twenty-four budget timeline. Um, December fifth is our next trustee meeting, um, I would ask that we could have our ques- have questions back by December first. Is that okay with you, Ms. Mm?
What kind of questions do you need?
Well, just anything in regards to the budget.
Okay.
Yeah.
Can I have like suggestions or wish lists from you, Ms. Evans, too?
Oh, yeah.
I mean, I've looked at Ms. Hanson that I don't know.
All right, I think they should all be provided to Miss Varian, and then they can be marked. And we'll discuss that at the fifth.
Kind of whatever your opinion, your needs or interests or-
I think you did since, did you get to-
I sent an email around asking everybody to, to give their, um, wish lists or comments or thoughts about including. I, I think that's about all I could do.
Yes.
There is a notes pa- a notes tab on the spreadsheet that I did send you that's got a, a lot of the things that Nina and I have talked about.
Yes, I saw that.
Like a possible road or truck and other items, um, so that's just a spot that we can have things, hope that I can look at.
Thank you, sir. Good night, sir.
I, I mean, this is something Julie and I have been working on for quite a while, and we put together, you know, Bubba gave me a list of all of our equipment, and he gives our projections about when different pieces of equipment might need to be replaced, and we looked at, you know, the potential need for increase to employees, um, we brainstormed through a, a bunch of different themes, and so, anyway.
Awesome, any kind of grants or money that you're gonna apply for, even though it's sort of free money, it still has to go into the budgets, but come back out with the budget to, for the expenses, so anything that we're gonna apply for that might be in your radar, we need to hold on to as well.
And are, are we gonna be, uh, bringing in Mr. Burkeholder as part of the transition process in this, in this effort?
I don't know what you're talking about, Mr. Evans, we're talking about the budget, I'm not sure where you're going.
Correct, this is the twenty-twenty-four budget.
Correct.
Which Mr. Burkeholder will be serving under, so my question is, as part of the transition, are we gonna bring him into this discussion?
He's not, well, I will talk with the prosecutor to make sure, because well, one thing, he's not sworn in yet, so it's not official. Yes, he won the election, congratulations, Mr. Burkeholder, again, for the second time.
He just certified today.
But I just, no, well, you're sworn in. So, he's certified today, he's certified today? Mr. Burkeholder?
They certified the election today.
Okay, okay, so as far as him getting the budget, being involved in it, I don't know, I would have to talk to the prosecutor about it.
The budget is-
No, Mr. Evans, again, again, Mr. Evans, I'm trying to do things properly and right, so I don't know the answer, so I would rather be safe by asking the prosecutor if we can. I didn't, and you didn't, when, when the previous board left, and other boards that I've talked to around the state, I've never, they've just done that.
Because they refused any transition.
Mr. Evans, excuse me, please, um, I will check, um, and we can see what we need to do to get that to him. I mean, you're making something out of nothing, I've noticed, you know, but we'll check into it to make sure that we can do that.
No, I'm trying to provide a proper transition, and if we put from a certain trustee, that would be over this pleasure.
So, you, on the timeline, you suggested having questions back to Julie by December the first?
December the first.
And that, so that it can, they can then be discussed at the next meeting, December the fifth?
Correct, that will be December fifth.
Okay, do you need, do you need any other, um, dates on the timeline, just those two, Karen? Okay, very good.
That'll be, yeah.
That makes sense, I'm sure.
Thank you. All righty, let's go and move over to Grohlikin County Board seat. I move that we finalize the letter from the Board of Trustees to Grohlikin County requesting John Singleton to be considered for the next available, uh, board seat. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Discussion?
So, you might remember that where this came from, it came out of, um, West Looking Development CIC, that the West Looking Board, um, suggested a, a draft letter for this board to send to the Grohlikin County Board Chair and the Commissioners to appoint a representative of Etna Township to the Grohlikin Board. And so, that's, that's sort of the genesis of where we'd get to for this particular issue.
Now, just for the public's consumption, this is in separate order, this includes John Carvallo, Nina Hanson, Rosalind Key. It, it, it's your recommending as the board to this, it's not a separate board recommending this. I just wanna make that clear.
It is a separate board, it's a separate board of the West Looking CIC that voted actually unanimously and provided a signed letter to this board with the suggestion of the language for the letter that, that might go to Groh and the County Commissioners.
I, I would have, uh, a concern about conflict of interest to have a zoning inspector on a development board.
I frankly think he's probably uniquely suited to serve on that board, given his, his knowledge of the development plan for the township, the available properties, and the, you know, and as developers come in and ask questions, I, I-
But he's in charge of enforcement of, you know, and I think that, th- there's numerous other people that can do this. I, I think to avoid any conflict of interest would be the higher, highest priority. And if we're gonna-
We'll call this room.
Mr. Evans?
No.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes. I'm gonna turn the, um, meeting over to Mr. Johnson regarding the fourth, first quarter of twenty-twenty-four trash and recycle fees.
All right, um, as you guys, most of you know, we've paid for trash service in the past, our quarter was a way of giving back some of the money that we have extra in the township. Um, when I say extra, I mean more than we expected to spend, we'll have more this year than what we had last year, carry over, and, um, one way to do that in the past is we've rescinded or suspended the tax revenue for the road levy for one year, um, we did not do this this year, we did not do it last year. So, another way we've found is to do the trash, the way you give it back to our community here, the residents of the township, um, and it's roughly a hundred fifty thousand dollars to do that. Um, basically, we would take their bill, first quarter of the year, it'd be, we wouldn't have a bill for that. So, um, I propose that we would pay for the trash service for the township. I don't believe it's gonna exceed, whatever it is, I think it's right around a hundred fifty, but, but just whatever that cost is.
Are you hungry? Does that have more of a number than one, one, two? Yeah, what, what I might suggest we do is, if we, if this is something that the board would like to move forward with, then I could get the exact amount from Wind Waste and the exact procedure. What I understand is that they projected that the amount would not exceed a hundred fifty thousand, and just a little bit, depending on how many, you know, residents are, have service and that type of thing, but based on their, um, numbers, we believe it'll be a hundred fifty thousand. They can suspend the automatic payments, um, and then, of course, paper bills would not go out. Um, instead, a letter and, um, you know, have a new year type of, the township is paying for new needs type of letter, so. But if the board wants to go forward, then I would suggest that, you know, and actually, uh, you know, take a vote on this tonight until I can get in writing all of the details, and then at that point, then you can take action maybe in the next meeting.
Would that give us enough time?
I believe so, I mean, if you wanna take action tonight, I, I believe the number is a hundred fifty thousand. It, it's not gonna be more than that, it might be a little less than that, but, you know, Wind Waste, um, has told me on the phone that they would lock it in, that it would, they would cap it, and it would not cost us any more than a hundred fifty thousand. Actually, I think it'd be a little bit less, but-
And I, I, I've been beaten to the post of this for the years that's been done, been done for political purposes, um, previously. I, I've heard from resident after resident that they don't want their trash paid, they want their, the services that should be done, minimize the impacts that developments is having on, on them. Uh, we, we've hired and approved four deputies at an extreme cost, each deputy, I think, is about a hundred fifty thousand a year that's coming out of our pocket, which is typically covered, uh, the, the patrolling is covered by the county, so right there, that's six hundred thousand, uh, and this doesn't reach all residents. I've also had concerns that I'm not included, the bill is at Cumberland Trail, they're not included, other ones. So, you're, you're using our resources in a disparate way across all, all the, all the residents. So, I, I don't think we should do it for that matter, and we, we may have more revenue now, but, uh, the revenue's declining from Amazon, the, they're halfway through their abatement, uh, which, what happens after that? It went from one point two million to one point one to one a year. When they go, it, it could reduce to a normal, uh, jet Z, so I, I don't think we should just be frivolous with this, and, I mean, we've got a park coming on board, we've got a lot of other stuff, we just talked about all the additional expenses, and we're talking cars, equipment, more park employees. I, I think this is a little premature to say, "We're gonna pay your trash", uh, and again, I've heard from constituent after constituent, we don't want that, we want you to deal with the traffic. We want you to deal with all the issues of the township. I mean, why are we paying the cable, why are we paying the water, why are we paying, I mean, this, again, it, it doesn't make sense, it's not fiscally responsible.
Ms. McKee?
Yes, ma'am. Um, I'm gonna ask two things with this one, one, that I get a detailed invoice, come on? And two, when will it be due?
I'm sorry?
When will the payment be due, because it's not in the budget?
In January, the payment will be due in Jan-
So, it's the twenty-twenty-four item?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll have to, I mean, you can approve it this year, but I'll, it'll be in the twenty-twenty-four budget, but.
I'm fine with it till next meeting, if that, if it works for, I was trying to get, I was thinking, get the letter out, make sure, you know, that kind of stuff, so.
I mean, obviously, it's gonna make it easier for, to make sure it all happens seamlessly if we, if, if you determine to do this sooner rather than later.
Right.
But, you know, if it, if you're not quite ready to do that- But, you know, if it, if you're not quite ready to do that, I get that too, but...
I can work on that to me, that's behind the walls, though. If all of you think you'll have time.
That's my issue.
Yeah. All right, can you put on the next agenda there?
Sure. So I guess we can move over to, uh, old business. Um, All Traffic Solutions, I move to authorize the purchase of a radar sign from All Traffic. In the amount, there's two different amounts out there. As the board needed, went out and pulled some additional information because of Mark wanted her to go out and do more research to make sure that we had all the information. And I guess, is it Bluetooth with some additional cloud services that we could?
Yes.
Get for additional?
Yes, so I really
Four thousand?
created this issue. Because I was under the mistaken understanding that what I saw at Reynolds Park, which included cloud-based services, was included, it was part of the, um, quote for seven thousand three hundred ninety-three dollars and fifty-nine cents.
Yep.
As it turns out, that, that quote of seventy-three ninety-three fifty-nine does match up with what we previously approved. And that is, that the data is on the equipment, it can be downloaded and saved, and reports created, um, locally, it just doesn't have the cloud base. And in order to do it through Bluetooth and with the cloud base, then it's eleven thousand...
One hundred eighty dollars and thirty-four cents.
Six. Um, it, since we don't have our own police force, I, I don't, I don't think that's necessary. I thought that was a nice frill.
Yeah.
Which I thought was included.
Four thousand dollars.
But it's a four thousand dollar frill. And so, you know, that would not be my recommendation. My recommendation would be for us to go forward with the original quote of seven thousand three hundred ninety-three dollars and fifty-nine cents.
And I agree that we don't need the traffic cloud and the, the cloud service and that. But my concern was, it was presented to the board as being included in there, we were asked to make a vote.
Totally, I made a mistake.
But we asked to make a vote on proper information, so that was my concern. And I, and I did have to reach out to, uh, Julie Skiten.
Yeah, you didn't have to do that, because I was going to do that the next day. Like, I just made a mistake, that's all.
Ms. Hanson, please, I'm speaker here, Ms. Hanson, please. Uh, but that's part of proper due diligence, we've got to make sure that the information presented to the board is accurate, complete. And, uh, just like the other one, you know, lacking the mileage and that, we need the full information to be able to make these decisions. So I would just say, you know, we, we've got to be a little bit more careful in the future.
Um, yes, sir. Well, well, let me go back to, let me say, let me say, because this will put the amount in.
The amount, I don't...
Yeah, so I move to authorize a purchase of the radar signs for All Traffic in the amount of seven thousand three hundred ninety-three dollars and fifty-nine cents. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, uh, discussion?
Okay, stay. You guys just finished with the last meeting, I don't know if you need to do the next one, but...
Roll call?
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes. Okay, it's Mr. Boy, well, I should say, Mr. Bruce. Gentlemen, it's, it's, oh, sorry, how you doing? Thanks for hanging out with us.
patiently waiting.
Oh, you were so patient, I'm sorry, long meeting today.
Yes, sir, it's, I haven't eaten since noon, so...
Oh, no!
We have some candy there, man.
Very good, Rick.
Yeah, that's right.
So I'm, I'm here to hopefully, uh, acquire a, an easement from the township. I think you said last, last meeting that you're going to go maybe look at the site, uh, and look at our other, uh, condition over the...
I was waiting for, it felt the rain action, so I could see it was low, but that didn't happen until today.
Okay.
And I didn't get a chance to dig it, so...
Hi, Megan.
Good, okay. Um, I've spoken with Anita about it, she's on the park committee, I guess, and they're going to go visit the site.
Yep.
Uh, I thought, I think they've done that. Um, the issue of maybe, of why we couldn't re-engineer, so a very timely process of having the, final development plan approved. We followed that engineering from that original plan. Uh, as you know, the town, the county has all the technical review committees, and it's absolutely the most time-consuming thing. So once you get the development plan, do the engineering, uh, and you, and you must follow that engineering. And so that's what this boils to, that we'd like to get signed and, and get the easement from you, so... Not sure, you have any questions, or?
No, I, I'm just still concerned about using park land for an easement of, I think, point six five acres. Uh, it, when we don't know what our use is and, and the configuration on that end, I, especially without any design or...
It, the development plan showed that easement, it showed a little box where the easement had to go. Um, and so during the transfer, the parcel transfer to the, to the township, I mean, we're just following the plan. That's, that's all that was, so...
Are you saying that plan, I know there was a lawsuit involved, that planned this. Are you saying that easement was part of the settlement?
Well, it, what the, when I talked to Jonathan Wilcox, who he is, I presume, uh, he said the spirit, he said, I, I, it shouldn't be an issue, but it's an issue, kind of, should have, the spirit of the transfer should have included that. Because I, I asked him whether there was any division, when the parcel transferred, did anybody take the easement for the drainage? And I got, I don't think they did. So it was an oversight by somebody, so here we are.
And it's, because we paid for the park, we, it, it's, if it was a commercial property, I don't think you'd be letting it. And I, I mean, you, you're saying it, it's out of convenience for your, so you don't have to redesign that end, correct? Of drainage and all that?
Well, if the, if the, yeah, if the, if the parcel had had changed, it would have been there, been no problem. So whatever transpired to have the parcel, you know, the township purchased it, it was an oversight, I suppose, but it is always, you know, has to flow to the south, creek is there. You're going to be, it's going to be on the, on the downslope of that, and then the creek. So it's not really, I don't, I don't see anybody being able to do anything in the park. Anita, did you happen to go and look at the exact area?
Well, so, yes, when we had our site visited, the park, we looked at the area. Uh, and, I mean, I think the, pretty much the sentiment of the, the park committee that was there was that, well, I, I can see, you know, actually, it seems like it should go a little bit farther over, that, because the swell is farther over. But people didn't necessarily see it as being problematic, um, because of the, the material of the, um, spill itself, and, you know, the fact that, you know, grass would likely cover it. In fact, we have an engineer on our park committee, and, uh, and the committee said, can you send us what it looks like of what they're proposing? So I sent the material, and we have, we have an engineer on the park committee, and he said, oh yeah, I don't think that would be a problem. But again, I mean, we don't have any way of knowing what ultimately would be proposed at that area of the park.
Because looking at the satellite, I mean, there's three natural ponds there, it is being farmed around it, so it is usable land. So you can envision people going there, and I think that is going to impede on maybe possible use around those ponds. And that, and I, I just think limiting us, if there's other options, because obviously there are other options.
Yeah, I, I, I don't see it that way, but, you know, who am I? It's, it, the, the process of the engineer and to get where we are has been, you know, years, essentially. And I don't, I don't know, to go back and change and get a, a new revised development plan through the county, you're talking probably a year and a half. And just for the back slope of a pond, you got, you got it up here at fourteen feet, it's the back slope. It's, I mean, and it's going to be covered, you're not going to see it, the only thing you're going to see is the pipe and those, that bit of riprap at the, when that, when that gets vegetated, it's, that's all you're going to see. You're not going to see the map.
Obviously, you look at it, it's beautiful, it's, I mean, I think, pretty hot, and if you look at what it, it's going to be impeded, so, I mean, it's... And I think we've got to look at this parks here for ever, for our residents and that, and it's not, it's never going to get bigger. Population is, so I think we need to preserve what we have. And we don't even know for sure if it'll get that big. Those, those are the, that's your pond, this, so I wish we had, over it.
This is south.
This is south. Yeah, so you can see, yeah. Because you're, you're talking about the overflow through that. Because you, you, this, that's you, that's the pond, but here's the easement right through all that.
Well, it's literally a little notch.
Well, it's over half acre, um...
Yeah, but I think it's about to go down here, this, it's long this way, it's forty feet.
What?
It's about forty feet wide, if you can imagine.
It's two hu- two hundred foot by hundred fifty-seven? Yeah, it's two hundred foot by hundred fifty-seven, but it's right at the edge of the pond. And the other side of the pond is the development, so our side would be intersected by this, so it would have been used, and I just, I know it caused an inconvenience for the developer.
What would happen if we came back and tried to shrink up the acreage? I mean, I, that looks bigger than a matting across, like, you know, I don't know where that dimension came from, actually.
Well, that's the size of the easement that's being requested.
Well, the part of the discussion we should take into account, make that bigger than the rest of the...
Well, the matting is only, this is a hundred fifty-seven feet wide, matting's going to be forty feet, forty-five feet wide. So you have three, three dimensions of the, of that matting, fifteen feet.
Right, that's what I'm saying, it's not a small spillway, it's, it's a... And if you're going to just let it grow, that's...
Well, what you, could be open if I can get it narrowed down?
Well, I think it's just, because the problem here is you've got half on the developer's side and half the pond on our side. So if, if you want to use, and that's...
This is the edge of our pond, and you're going to have a walkway around here.
Isn't it our property?
No, I mean, no, it's, the actual, li- literally, this, this property line right here is the, kind of, the edge.
The walkway?
The top, top edge of the pond. It's going to be a walkway, it's going to be asphalt. So, it's four, yeah, okay.
So that's what you're saying. So we, we touch it on the one side.
It's going to be roughly like, yeah, really about in here.
But then you want to extend it even further.
Yeah, the, the pond will get extended up onto that line there, and then the spillway will go to...
Oh, you're going to increase the pond size to our prop, well, with that eight-foot walkway?
Yeah. Creek is like right here, so this is the, this is, you know, kind of, high weeds, trees, and then, and then the creek. It's not the farm, but the flat land. It's kind of hilly, uh, hard to even walk through.
Okay, I'd almost like to see that land, I haven't been there.
Okay. On the table?
Because I'd like to, if it is, now, rocky, maybe, uh...
I think, I think you'll agree that it's not what you're, it's not, I don't think it's going to be anything.
But I'd like to...
Look at it. The road is built, so we have the road coming off of Refugee Road, it's probably a hundred and fifty feet. Then the road starts, and it's almost the, the last, um, inch and a quarter of asphalt, but it's all asphalt, if you're able to walk. I think it's going to block it up with equipment, but you can walk right up the road, and then it's going to start to that pond.
I mean, I'd like to do that, if we're going to make a decision, make it informed.
Do you have a projection about when Refugee and Smoke will be open?
Yeah, um, so we, today I got a call from Jared Nerd and Brad Mercer, uh, we're going to have a weekly meeting. Uh, I've invited Don, uh, out to a Tuesday morning meeting. Uh, the mission is to open it up as quick as we can, I think that most all the crossing pipes are done. The lift station has been a total amazing project, because every pipe that we've uncovered, uh, has been the wrong pipe, we've had to redo plans, uh, Mr. Gillett's had to approve all that. Anyway, the mission is to open it up before Christmas. Um, the box culvert will not be in, so in April, we'll have put the box culvert in, and we did the road line, and that...
So the last prediction I heard was December seventh, but now you're saying...
Yeah, no, it's going to be about, um... Don's going to come to the meeting, he'll know what the game line is.
Thank you.
I don't, we didn't have a motion on the board, did we?
No.
We'll take it to next meeting, I guess we want...
Yeah, but I don't even think we're going to see what...
You don't think, there's no motion made?
There's just one call.
Right, we're just...
Yeah, just... Is that the site, you said it's open, so if I go this weekend, it would be...
Yeah, 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 you won't be able to drive, you'll be able to get on Refugee Road, go right up to the site, this will grab them, you can pull in, and then walk up, and then you can walk down, if you don't mind, walking down the brand new road from there. So there's a, a, a gap between Refugee Road and the, the new road, because all that, that lift station, pump station work is all right there, and we could have built a road.
All right, that's fine.
It's also not very far walk if you go in off of Smoke, at the, sort of, the entrance right there at Smoke, and then you walk around and kind of go around the corner like that, it's not a very far walk from, from Smoke.
There's a drive that you can park it at, I think.
Yeah, yeah, we parked, we parked it right there at, um, at Smoke, at that entrance, and then walked. And it, it wasn't, it wasn't very far, you could walk it that way as well.
Right, so we're, hopefully get to it, and, uh, we're looking for it.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, excuse me. Could we move over to the fiscal officer report? Um, I move Resolution twenty-three eleven, twenty-one oh three, to include the purchase orders as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
The neighborhood strategies, that five hundred dollars, do you have a file with that was for, or?
The, the contract that I have says the, but, an amount that I divided and shorted at five hundred dollars, so...
Okay, so it was for the sole, to make it full?
Yeah, it's just the regular, now, there, there is a purchase order on there with a, on a three crust. Let's, let's look at that, or the light, right?
The just hour?
Yeah, that one is for a light, pulled up a couple of years ago, probably.
Yeah, about two, two, half a year ago, yeah.
That apparently, that back was not paid.
Do we, are, are we tracking the reimbursement on this?
Well, there, it, we don't expect there's going to be a reimbursement on this one, because it was the result of teenagers who stole a vehicle and hit the pole. because it was the result of teenagers who stole a vehicle and hit the pole. Uh, but it was something that had been, well, I have to research it because I just found out about it today, but from what, um, Mr. Copley was saying, this is, it was an incident that happened a number of years ago. The pole has just been replaced because of supply chain delays. And so that's why we now have an invoice, because they now have replaced the pole that was from a number of years ago. And so, we just need to track it back through the history to figure out what is going on. But it's not likely that it's, that there is any insurance to cover reimbursement because of the circumstances of the accident.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes. I move to ratify the payment for bills as shown on the payment listing. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, discussion? Roll call. Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes.
And actually, I have a fund summary reports to do, if you want, but I can just, I have the revenue and expenses. Um, as of, and the end of October, the year-to-date revenue was six point four million. Year-to-date expenditures were four point three million. Um, we have, currently have a cash balance of seven point seven million among other accounts. And right now, I'm estimating we'll have a carryover of unencumbered funds of six point nine million, well, actually, six million. So, that means we'll go into twenty twenty-four with about six million dollars of expenses that we didn't spend in twenty twenty-three.
Thank you. Okay, um, I'll address the announcements. We'll move over there.
Yes, I'd just like to say, related to the earlier actions to the board, again, the investigation was halted by Ms. McKee uh, after the quote-unquote investigator stated that they couldn't meet because they had a trial and this, that, the other. Uh, I think it's unfortunate because uh, it, it wasn't proper. Uh, that there was a final report that was demanded without all the information. And there was plenty of information to show that there was issues with the employee um, that were not being addressed properly. So, uh, I, I think it's unfortunate, but again, um, to halt it early by one member of this board is inappropriate, and our council did say that that's what happened.
I'm just going to make you guys know that the attorney-client privilege is waived on that report, so it's available. Um, they did reach out to you, Mr. Evans, over fifteen times to try to set up, and we said we wanted to move it to the first. Uh, because the fact that we do have a, um, new trustee that's going to start the first of the year. Um, so we, best thing was to get the, the report taken care of as soon as possible. And um, they did try to reach out to you, like I said, over fifteen times, but you had, couldn't work with the, the investigator. Um, second thing, I want to bring up the fact that Mrs. Brown, um, during election, had a sign in her car, um, which had nothing to do with me, um, and there's no policy in place. I never told Mrs. Brown to put that, uh, sign in her car, in your car. Um, I had nothing to do with that. Um, there's no policy, there's no procedure in place, there's nothing changed to make that happen. I know there was rumors by one of our trustees that put that out there, so I just wanna lay that to rest. Second thing, the third thing, I want to bring up the fact that the equipment that was in this room that would help with the, um, the, um, cameras, um, that I stole it. No, I've never even put my hands on the equipment. So, let's clear that up real quick. I know people like me, uh, people sometimes think we're thieves, but no, I, I don't have a reason to take it. Um, I never put my hands on it. Um, I did make sure that because of my background, um, security, that machines can be moved from one place to another. Um, and then we hired a investigator, forensic, that came out and moved the equipment from one place, from our location to their location, and then back with my signature, but I never touched the equipment. So, the equipment is still available, so let's just keep that in mind, that I never took the equipment. I never removed it even out of the closet, so, yeah, so I just wanna get that off.
I have phones otherwise.
I'll, I'll clear this up. I was, I contacted the prosecutor's office, um, about what happened with the cameras and accessing that, that trustee Evans did, and they advised me to secure it so that no further damage could have been done to the recorder and the back thing. So, I came in here and I secured it on that same day. I locked it up in the safe. I had two witnesses, and it's been there ever since, except for when the investigator came and got it to check on it. Um, I know we've heard him, Ms. McKee had taken it, and certain of the accusers have taken it, the answer is I took it. Um, and so, I put it in there that day, and so I wanted to cover that up. To answer your question, you asked me a while ago, right, and that's what happened, so...
So, why wouldn't you have given it?
Because it was public comments, not push and answer session.
I asked you at the meeting.
Well, I asked you, I asked you about something too, and you didn't want to give me an answer, so...
He's not a trustee.
I know, it doesn't matter.
You're saying that we asked for months where there was, and- And to blame a resident? Come on, John.
No, no, I didn't blame you. I just said you guys didn't get an answer.
So, hopefully you go out on Facebook now and make it, make it be clear that Mrs. McKee did not steal the equipment.
But it was an advice of council, right?
I don't touch it.
Secure that.
Thank you. So, let's make a motion to adjourn for tonight.
Second.
Second. He's secured also.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, Ms. Mary?
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes.
Yes.
Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Thanksgiving.
Enjoy your week.